All right, good evening, everyone. I will go ahead and call to order the Wednesday, April 17th, 2019, meeting of the Reno City Planning Commission. And we will start with the Pledge of Legions, and I will ask Commissioner Griffith to lead us this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Michelle, can I have roll call, please?
Breton Griffith.
Present.
Peter Gower.
Here.
Ed Hawkins.
Here.
John Marshall is absent. Paula Levis.
Here.
Kevin Weiskie.
Here.
Mark Johnson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is public comment. This item is for either public comment and any action item or any general public comment. Michelle, do we have any request to speak forms on this item?
Not for this item.
Okay. And anyone in the audience wishing to make a comment under this or any action item, please see Michelle for the orange forms up there. So with that, I will come back to the commission for item number four, approval of the minutes. We have three of them this evening. I'm going to start with a motion on the meeting from March 6th, 2019.
Commissioner Griffith, move to approve.
Commissioner Gower, second.
I think you have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. Next one is meeting of March 20th, 2019, of the Reno City Planning Commission. Looking for a motion.
Commissioner Weiskie, so moved.
Mr. Hawkins, second.
I think you have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner Griffith abstain.
Thank you very much. And the third one is for a meeting on April 3rd this year.
Commissioner Weiskie, so moved.
Commissioner Griffith, second.
I think you have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner Levis abstain.
Thank you very much. Okay. We have approved all the minutes, and we will move on to item five, our city council liaison reports.
Councilwoman Weber, I think, may be coming in shortly. Let's, you know, let's hold off.
Okay. We'll skip that. We'll come back to that one if she arrives, and we'll move on to item number six, presentation and discussion regarding Reno Fire Department staffing levels and other related matters. Good evening, Chief, welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners, thank you. Appreciate your time this evening. Brief presentation for you, and then, of course, I'll be available for any questions you may have. And as the item states, this is an update on our staffing. And really, what drives our staffing, of course, is our service and our service levels, our demands, our calls for service. So we're going to start off the presentation with that, and then I'll go into what our staffing looks like. And as I mentioned, you have an opportunity to ask any questions, so. The Reno Fire Department is an all-risk department. That means that when we get called, we go. Doesn't matter what it is. They dial 911, a citizen dials 911, they say, "Do you need police, medical, or fire?" Pretty obvious, police or medical. If they don't know who to send, they send fire. And we need to be prepared for all of those, and that drives a lot of our call volume. This is just a brief overview of some of the things we do. Of course, we're the Fire Department, so that's the obvious one, but medical calls are a huge component of what we do. We have all manner of different tactical rescue teams, whether it be water, high angle, confined space, trench. When I have new recruits, potential new recruits sitting across from me in the interview process when they want to get the job, one of the things I tell them is, no matter what you want to do here, you can do it in Reno. What you want to do in the fire service, you can do it in Reno. We have all of that, including hazmat. Of course, community risk reduction is a big part of what we do. That's our fire prevention, who I know you are very familiar with. That doesn't drive our call volume, that's more the call prevention aspect. But that is also an essential part of our department. Our mission, this is our mission statement. The key part is at the end there, dedication and pride in outstanding service. Like I said, if we get called, we always go, no matter, and our call volume has skyrocketed over the past couple decades, really. But we always respond to the call. I always like to make sure that our officials are aware of our department priorities, and you can see that staffing, right now, is our number-one priority. I've been in this job about four years, and I used to say that staffing and equipment were kind of one and one A in terms of what we needed most, because we had an aging fleet, and we still do. But we have a process in place where we're going to be replacing that fleet, so now staffing is our clear number-one priority. This is what our staffing has looked like over the past decade-ish. That red line in the middle there is the divorce that everybody colloquially refers to, refers to it as the separation from the county. We were consolidated with the county in 2000, separated in 2012, and that's why you see those drastic changes in staffing levels. Since I've been chief, we've been at 254. We added three positions. Those were not firefighter positions, and I emphasize that only because that's what, again, what's driving our call volume and how busy we are, is the work that the line or the operational people do, and those are the firefighters. Those three additional positions are two in fire prevention and one mechanic. This is the breakdown of what it looks like. Of course, that number at the top there, emergency operations, those are the men and women on the fire engines, the fire trucks. 219 FTEs. Really, it's 200, the six additional FTEs, there's 213 firefighters, and six additional FTEs are the battalion chiefs. We have two on duty each day. They're managing the staffing on a daily basis, so that's where the additional six come from. And again, that's the breakdown department-wide of what our FTEs look like. And it's not easy to read, I know, on the overhead there, but that's what our staffing or organizational chart looks like. Of those 219 emergency operations personnel, this is how we break them down. Like I said, six battalion chiefs on duty, or six battalion chiefs, two on duty each day. We operate 12 engine companies, two truck companies, two rescue units, what you might call an ambulance, and one squad every day for a daily staffing of 63 personnel. We operate, of course, 24/7, 365. 2018 calls for service, slightly down. We were over 42,000 in 2017, slightly down in 2018. Interesting thing, though, of course, the actual number of fires went up. We were about 850 last year, 2017, over 900 last year. It's that percentage on the EMS calls, the emergency medical service calls, that's a big driver of our call volume, and that number was up around 72%, 74%. So you're seeing a slight drop in the number of EMS calls, but really, no effect on the overall calls. So basically, you know, a 6% drop or so, you're looking at moving about 2,500 calls from EMS arena to fires and auto accidents and specialty rescues, those type of things. So our call volume is becoming more diverse as it increases. That's what 2017 looked like. Again, it was overstated, 815 fires then, over 42,000 calls in 2017. This is what that evolution of our call volume looks like, and I want to bring your attention all the way down to the bottom. 1999 calls for service, about 15,000. So we're looking at very nearly a triple in the call volume, triple the size of our call volume. 208 line staff, that compares to 213 today. So we've added five firefighters and 30,000 calls. That's not a very equitable comparison there. And you can see how, over the years, and we started in 2012 again, because that was the deconsolidation. So you see a linear progression of that call volume going up and up and up each year. Just to give you a point of reference, because I can say, hey, we ran 42,000 calls, and generally, people might say, is that a lot? You don't really know what to compare it to. And 213 firefighters, is that a lot? Where do you compare it to? Well, some of the metrics that we look at are calls per firefighter. And an average, you see up there in the middle block, around 120, 125 per firefighter. That's about what New York City does. We do over 200 calls per firefighter. Another metric you can look at is firefighters per thousand of population. So we're right at quarter of a million. That would put us at 250 firefighters. Again, we have 213. So we are truly doing more and more with less, or at least the same. Comparing to some other jurisdictions of similar size, Boise is the one that kind of jumps out, almost exactly our population. They have a few more stations, half the call volume, and they have one firefighter per thousand. And one per thousand is a good, that's a conservative metric to look at in terms of, it's not too much or too little, you know, that would be a good target. A lot of departments across the nation, they're up there around 1.1, 1.12. Doesn't seem like much, you know, it's a fractional increment. If we were at that number, we'd be close to 300 firefighters. And I'm going to tell you, that's not an unreasonable number for the city to have, given our call volume and what we do. So what are our options? There's really only two. We have the general fund, we're general fund-funded like everybody else in the city. It costs about $18 or $1.8 million to staff a fire station, one fire station. That's four personnel, 24/7, plus three, what we call floaters, which are the extras that count for sick or vacation when somebody's off. The one-time equipment funding, that's their personal protective equipment, everything that goes into training them, bringing them online as they start a career as a firefighter. So you're creeping up there, close to $2 million to open a brand-new fire station. The other option is to look for grants, and really, the only one available for firefighters is the SAFER Grant that we've identified up there. We did come to council last meeting, two meetings ago, maybe three, they all run together, and got approval to apply for eight positions through the SAFER Grant process. Just a little bit on that, because some of you who've been around may have a memory of the SAFER Grant that we had before. We had around 70 personnel on the SAFER Grant at one time. Sounds great, you have this free federal money. Back then, it funded the positions 100% for three years. So you have the funding, a flat grant-funded position, but then you drop off that cliff. And at the end of three years, if you don't have a plan on how to fund those 70 positions, you have what we went through, which was layoffs and a lot of people left with a bad taste in their mouth. That grant has now changed. It's still a three-year grant program period, but it's funded 65%, 65%, 35%. So what it forces to do is, the city buys in, they have to buy in, they have to put some money on the table, so they know this is not free, we're buying into this program. That last year, it weans them off, so they have to fund a little more. And each year, as they're going through the budget, the thought is, or the idea is, they're looking at that budget, and they see these three positions or eight positions, or however many have applied for, that you need to fund. As a city council, the city leaders, you need to fund, and you wean off that. The eight positions is a pretty conservative number, it's enough to make a difference in our daily staffing, but also enough that, or maybe so few, that if there were a problem, you know, downturn in the economy, something like that, when that grant ended, we can easily absorb that number, because we retire out about 12 to 15 people a year, which is why we have kind of a constant hiring process. So if we were to, for some reason, the economy tanked in three years, if we were awarded the grant, we've just applied for the grant, we haven't been awarded the grant yet. If the economy were to take a downturn, we could easily absorb those eight positions without having layoffs. And that, my personal concern was having to lay off firefighters. I don't want to go down that path, ever, so. And then I'll end with this. This is language that you've seen in many staff reports, such, it comes from my department, from that fire prevention department. And it's really, the point there is to make sure that everybody is aware, this is the burden that's being put on us. Every time we add a building, you know, everything from a single-family home to an apartment building to student housing, you're adding potential call volume to the Fire Department. And we're playing catch-up, and we're continuing to play catch-up. Some developers, some big projects, they have, we've agreed to fire development agreements, where they're contributing to the program, to our needs. But you can't do that across the board. You know, it's not the same to say, 5,000 homes up north in Stone Gate are going to contribute the same as 50 homes down in a small subdivision to the south. So the important thing, like I said, is the message that we're getting out there, that every time something like this gets approved, it's putting an additional burden on the Fire Department. And I want to make clear, I thought about this earlier today, this is not an anti-development stance by me or the Fire Department in any way. We recognize the need, we recognize the value there, but we also want people, the city leaders, to be aware of the impact it's having on our department. We're understaffed as it is, and the call volume goes up, it's gone up, and it continues to go up. And we just want to make sure that that awareness is there. We are looking at other options to reduce our call volume, maybe being proactive, because there are, there are calls that would go on, the Community Assistance Center, for example, that unfortunately, sometimes, calls that come out of there are not true emergencies. They're looking for some lower-level service. They may need medication, they may need a ride to the doctor, but they know if they call 911, somebody's going to come. And if we can work on, we are working on programs to try and keep them out of the system, so that they don't have to dial 911 to get a social service assistance, or get a ride to the doctor, or get their medication. So we're trying to be proactive on the other end, too, in terms of mitigating that call volume. So with that said, I'm available for any questions you might have.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioners, I have some questions for the Chief. Not seeing any jumping out right now. Mr. Gower?
You don't have to.
No, I mean, it was a great, it was a great presentation, and I, you know, I appreciate the context and the numbers. I think that was really informative. I guess the only question that I would have, and I think I've asked you this on specific projects, is are there types of development in certain locations that impact the department's ability to provide services more or less than others?
And we have discussed that before, and I'm glad you asked, because it gives me a chance to kind of talk about that spectrum. You know, I mentioned Stone Gate, which is an obvious one. It's basically a small city up outside of any effective service area that we have right now. Compare that to the new hospital that's planned down south. Both are going to have a significant impact on our service delivery, but in different ways. And the hospital, of course, is different, because it's within a service delivery area. Because we look at, can we provide an effective response within six to eight minutes? Our target is really six, but H is the upper threshold. The Stone Gate and the hospital developer are both contributing, but in different ways, based on our evaluation of the demand that they're going to put on the system. Hospital is, I was going to say arguably, but it's not really even arguable, it is the single highest-risk occupancy that we respond to. Because by definition, you have a high-rise building full of incapacitated individuals that are going to need help, potentially need rescue, and for that, we need ladder trucks. And if we, every time, we take every hospital call, we take every call seriously. But we provide a full response every time we go to a hospital, because of the high-risk nature of the occupancy. So every time we were to respond down south to that hospital, we would be stripping the city of every ladder truck that we have. So that's why our ask of them was a ladder truck, to mitigate the impact that they're going to have. Now, one ladder truck is not going to solve all problems if there's a true emergency down there, but they're contributing to mitigate that problem. So hopefully, that's a good example of how it can vary. It's Stone, Stone, Stone Gate on the other, on the other side, like I said, they're outside our service delivery area. So they're contributing a station, a fire engine, a brush truck, and an ambulance, the whole spectrum of services that we need up there. Bigger project, maybe, maybe a greater risk because of the volume of it, you know, 5,000 units compared, and outside, again, outside that service area. So a bigger demand, a bigger ask of them, and again, they recognize the impact they're going to have on the community, and they stepped up, so.
Just the only other question I have, then, is, is there other than the information that you provide us on the projects, and you had it on your last slides, which I thought was great, is there anything else that you think, as a commission, we should consider when we see, you know, these proposals come in, come to us?
You know, I've given that a lot of thought as well, and, you know, there are programs out there like Impact Fees, you know, that's kind of a little bit the elephant in the room, because it's a tool that's out there, it's allowed by statute, but it doesn't address a staffing need. We can't use Impact Fees for staffing, and staffing is really what we need right now. We can build stations, we can buy apparatus, but unless you have people to get on that apparatus, get on that fire engine and respond, it's not going to make a difference. And the truth is, well, look, Park Lane Mall, for example, or what used to be Park Lane Mall, that project, it's coming in, that's within three of our busiest, definitely the top-two busiest districts, and maybe another one in the top four or five, and we're going to add 1,700 more units in there. Now, we can, they're within our response area, and we can add an engine, we have capacity at Station 3, for example, which is on Moana, to add an engine, but without the people, it's not going to make a difference. And Impact Fees are not going to fix that, so.
All right, I've got one more question. I'll go there. Do you think about how to phrase this? Do you think that when proposals come to us and we look at them based on the information that you provide and current staffing levels, that there is a concern about the concurrency of services with development?
I think concurrency is the right word to use. There is a concern about that. Because eventually, those projects, the Park Lane project, property taxes are going to come in, revenues are going to go up. You know, I don't know when the breakup point is going to be for that or any of the project that it would support the additional staffing we need, but yeah, the concurrency is always a challenge.
And then that needs to be addressed at the time of, before the time of development? I mean, we need to look at it sooner.
Yes. I think that question needs to be asked.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Additional questions? Commissioner Hawkins?
Not a question, but what I want to, I want to make a statement here. I've had Engine 9 at my house several times over the past few years, including a year and a half ago when my spaniel tore my grandson's face apart, and it was a bloodbath. And I want you to give them, Engine 9, my thanks, and they're doing a hell of a job out there.
I truly appreciate that, because I say it jokingly, but it's not a joke. The people who are willing to do the work at the Fire Department are people like the crews on Engine 9 and the people out in the field. If I get hit by a bus, they're still going to come and help, and that's why I appreciate everything they do.
Thanks.
Thank you for that.
Commissioner Weiskie?
Chief, my question goes back to staffing. And when we approve a project, we approve a project based upon the thought of additional taxes coming in to be able to go to staffing. It's not like you can provide a will-serv letter like we do with sewer or water, you know? No, I'm not, I'm missing three guys, so we can't issue this building permit. As much as I'm sure my six other Commissioners would like to add that as a condition, we can't do it. But there's only so many big lots left, so many stone gates left, and it's a very, very minute number compared to the development possibilities that we see around here. How are you preparing, or how is RFD preparing for these smaller developments, these 50-home units that you can't ask for help with a fire station or a brush truck or an ambulance, too?
So I mentioned the, how we are trying to mitigate the call volume by reducing the, or eliminating the non-emergent calls. Your example's a good one, because when, I'll go back to Stone Gate, the way they structured that, we're always playing catch-up with government, right? Because we have to wait for the taxes to come in, the taxes paid for the services. But we don't need a fire engine and four people on it when the first house gets built, because that would be, that'd be untenable in any situation. But as those first projects come in, whether they be homes or apartments, whatever the case may be, we, I talk about providing the right response to the right call at the right level of service. Maybe you don't need, at your first 100 homes, a fire engine, because, you know, one fire engine per 100 homes, again, untenable. But you're going to have medical calls, and you can mitigate some of the fire issues through sprinklering, and you can handle the medical calls, maybe with a two-person apparatus, a less expensive apparatus, staffed at a more manageable level, as long as it's the right resource for the right call. And I think ramping up, in an approach of ramping up rather than going straight to full service, helps us get to where we need to be and provide the best service we can. It's not fire service. Like I said, though, you can mitigate that through sprinklers, and it's a higher level of service. I feel like we'd be advocating our responsibility if we didn't provide the best service we can at whatever level that may be. And if that means stepping it up to the ultimate goal of having a fire engine with four personnel, then I think that's the best way to do it.
Okay. Because based upon the numbers that we just saw, in order to get to the numbers that are most appropriate, you would be looking at ramping up about 40%, 45% of your staff to get to the numbers for that adequate servicing.
Right.
How, as a planning commission, when we're looking at a 40-house map, going to add to that? I mean, you're going to be, we're going to be looking at so many maps before we could respond to it as a planning commission, that I...
You know, I don't know that...
Because I'm trying to be helpful, and so is everybody else up here.
By the questions I'm hearing, you all are, and I appreciate that, and that's why I say asking the concurrency question is important. Again, to put everyone, the city, if you will, on notice that these needs are coming. So when you add 10 units or 40 units or 100 units at a time, it's not the 1,700th unit that made the difference, it's the 1,699 before that. And so city leaders can plan as they see this building up. They see the comments like we put in our staff reports, so they can say, okay, we understand the value here, you know, it's within zoning or whatever the question that needs to be asked on that project is, and we're going to approve it, knowing that, looking forward, we're building up those markers that we need to plan for to provide service at the end of the day for that project, for all the projects that make up that, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Additional questions? I have one, one quick one. Just a question regarding that SAFER Grant.
Yes.
Is that something that is, I guess, requested and all of the paperwork, everything, is that through the Fire Department, or is that city manager-generated and...
Kind of a unique nuance there. It's through the Fire Department. So we submit the grant in the name of the city, under the Fire Department. But because of the nature of that grant, and I'm only speculating a little bit on this, part of the application process is a representation by the applicant, by us, that if granted, if awarded, that the city leaders, in our case, city council, will accept the grant. And my speculation is that they may have had some problems where city leaders had second thoughts and said, hey, we actually don't want that grant now. Because it's a, it's a long, thorough process to go through the application and the award. We applied back in March, about roughly a month ago, and we'll find out in July. And to go through that whole process and then have somebody turn down a grant, really does a disservice to other people who can and would use the grant. So we went to city council, asked for approval, which they gave, along with the condition that, yes, if you get it, we will accept it.
Okay. I was just thinking about it in terms of knowing the amount of work that goes into applying for the grant and then even administering it, because I'm imagining that there's the financial and the contractual relationship and everything that goes there, so I didn't know if that was all handled through the Fire Department, or, you know, if in terms of ways that, you know, city leaders can help, if there's, you know, some aspect of that, either grant-writing or administration, that can be done through city, you know, through the city manager's office, or, you know, something along those lines. I just wasn't sure how that, how that was set up.
I'm fortunate in that Michelle Hobbs, who's my administrative manager, is, she's got a wealth of institutional knowledge, not just Fire Department, but of the city, very experienced in grant-writing, grant-management. It will ultimately be administered through the Fire Department. And that was also part of our presentation to city council, was this is part of our budget that you're going to have to commit to each year for the next three years, so you're, you're kind of signing off on that in advance.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Mr. Gower?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
One more.
It's taken a while to digest the information this evening. It's a lot to think about. I, you know, back to Commissioner Weiskie's point about, you know, trying to just come up with solutions or ideas, you know, I think one of the main things that we're concerned about as Commissioners is making informed decisions. You know, that's, that's kind of our number-one goal up here. We've got to make sure that relative to our findings, we're making the, you know, the best, most informed decision possible. And, you know, a lot of times, our findings relate to, you know, adequate provision of services, which fire is a main one. And I think a lot of times, we weigh that based on the response times. If it's, you know, this eight-minute is kind of like this magic threshold. If it's outside of it, then it's like a red flag goes up, and we say, oh, wait a minute, you know, this, this is an issue, let's talk about it, is this appropriate? But I think there's another component to it, based on what you're, what you've presented. It's really response time plus the availability of staffing, as I under- It's really response time plus the availability of staffing, as I understand it, relative to population is the metric that you used. So, I mean, is there an opportunity to, you know, when a project comes in, we have a station area that in addition to that, that distance or that response time metric, do we get something else that says this project is located within Station 8 response radius? And, you know, FTEs to population are such that that could influence the response time?
Particularly great question because it's something that I'm working on. Don't have it ready yet, but it'll be very soon. A little variation on that, not, availability is the word, but not based on FTEs, based on actual availability. We're data-driven society, right? And we have brought in a consultant to really help us manipulate, not in a negative way, our data so we can, we have to figure out what answer, what question do we want to answer? By Station 8, is that engine going to be available? It's great if, you know, Engine 1 down here is, you know, they're within four minutes of everything. They're also going out 35 times a day, so they may not be available. So what we're going to measure is how many times in different districts for different projects, we'll be able to tell you, okay, this project is not going to have a major impact because Engine 8 is generally available. Or it's generally available at night, but not during the day, and that project is a commercial enterprise that may have more of an impact during the day. Whereas District 1, Engine 1's always busy. So you're going to get coverage. Like I said, we're always going to come, but it might be Engine 4 coming from the west or Engine 2 coming from the north. So we're going to have a delayed response time. So you get a better feel for what impact that project will really have in that area. And like I said, we're putting, I'm hoping to have, you know, an initial run of that data within a few weeks or a month here, so...
That sounds great. That's really exciting to hear about that. I think that's, that's really where we want to go to understand that, you know, that concurrency, to be able to answer that concurrency impact and, you know, availability of services question. So that's really exciting.
Yeah, because it really, you know, it's great, the station's three minutes away, nobody's entered, doesn't really matter.
Exactly.
You know?
Yeah. Thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you. That was a great, great question. Are there any additional questions? Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate all your time.
Thank you. We will move now to public hearings. We will start with item 7.1, case number LDC 19-00052, Lily's Banquet Hall. We'll start with a presentation from the applicant.
Good evening. My name is Carolina, and I'm representing my family's business. So we're going to be going over Lily's Banquet Hall. So we're going to go over, just, I'll talk about the company and then we'll go over the plan that we have, and then we'll go over the concerns that we've gotten back from police, the Fire Department, and from Platney.
Can you bring that microphone closer to you?
Yeah, you can move it.
Oh, sorry. Can you hear me? Yeah, okay, thank you. Do you guys want me to repeat what I said? Okay. So a little bit about the company. My family has owned companies in Reno for over 20 years. My grandmother owns La Milagrosa, which is a quinceañera slash bridal store on Wall Street. We also own Asís Mi Tierra, which is a Salvadorian restaurant on Wall Street. And my mom owns Lily's Decor, which is a quinceañera slash decorating business as well. So we are looking to expand the businesses and we found this space that we want to use as a banquet hall. So what we're trying to use it as is a place where people can come and do birthday parties, small gatherings, baptisms, small events of this type. I know we're registered as a nightclub use, but I just want to highlight that it's, will just be for the weekends, for like small birthday gatherings, it would be private So we are looking to host only one party during each weekend. So either they, most, most people would do Saturdays. The hours will range from 4:00 PM to 2:00 AM, music stopping at 1:00 AM. Just that hour to clean up, pick up, and is why we're asking for 2:00 AM. So cleaning will be provided by us. There will be an event coordinator there on site, which will either be me or my dad. In our contracts, we have put down all the regulations and all of the little things that the city or the Fire Department and Police Department have required us to have. So all our customers and event hosts will be aware of everything that needs to be applied at each event. So for security, we'll have security on site at all times of the event, and they'll be doing routine checks around the building, so making sure that there's no loitering around the parking lot, making sure that there's no garbage being thrown, and just controlling the traffic. They are going to be doing door checks. And in the door checks, all events are asked that they provide RSVP passes for their guests just to make sure, since it is a shopping center, that the people that are going into the venue are the people that are supposed to be there. So they'll also be doing checks for alcohol, so making sure that they're 21 years or older. They'll be doing stamps at the door. And we'll also, I think that's my next slide, but, we'll also have a bartender on site, which will be checking that they have those stamps on. And for smoking, there'll be no smoking in the building. There will be a smoking area right outside of the building that will be secured with a little fence. And so for the noise control, so like I said, our hours for noises are, well, the hours for the party would be from 4:00 AM to 1:00, 4:00 PM to 1:00 AM. And then we're making sure, and we've done our own noise study to just measure the noises and to see what's working that, so with the doors closed, you won't be able to hear the music outside of the building. And then we've also put that in our contracts with, if people are bringing their own DJs or their own music, that if they ever pass that, that we can shut down the party. And then, yeah, so, let me just make sure... Pretty sure I went over everything that was a concern from everyone that we heard about. Is there any questions?
So we'll have a presentation from staff and then we'll call you back if we have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, guys.
All right, Kyle, that was your lead-in.
Thank you, Chair Johnson. Commissioners Kyle Chisholm, Assistant Planner, for the record. So the applicant did a really good job of overviewing the project. Just to give you some perspective on where this site is located, it's on the northeast corner of Vassar and Kitsky. You can see the tenant space, about 3,000 square feet, highlighted in red. It's in the kind of northeast corner of the building. This is an existing shopping center. And the key concerns with regards to this request, obviously it's a nightclub use due to the bands and music and other components that may be anticipated there. And some of the concerns that staff had regarding that were loitering, trash, alcohol, age verification, security, noise, and surveillance. And so as the applicant's representative stated, they, they did provide staff with a very thorough, detailed operations and security plan that highlighted and really addressed a lot of those issues. Staff felt comfortable with it. In regards to the security concerns, we heard from code enforcement and RPD noting that the rear of the building, or if you're looking at this map, be kind of the east and north sides of that red space. There are some doors and access points back there as well, some parking area. And it was noted that there's not a lot of natural surveillance, kind of a, kind of a dead space as seen from the street. So there were some concerns about that. As well as just general security plan, which the applicant has provided and addressed all this, all the security issues that staff had concerns with. You'll see conditions five and six in the staff report that are in relation to those concerns. Five being the condition for to basically require that the applicant only use the front entrance, which is kind of, no, I have a pen on me, sorry, kind of on the southwest corner of that, of the tenant space or the main parking lot there on the south side, rather than the rear doors, so that they can keep those shut for noise purposes. Also, hours, also in the request was a request for extended hours of operation beyond the code-allowed hours. The applicant has requested to go to 2:00 AM on Friday and Saturday nights. And after looking at the area, there's, there's numerous uses that operate even up to 24 hours a day in the direct vicinity of the site. And the hours of operation proposed, there's a condition in the staff report with limiting those, limiting those hours to what has been proposed that is consistent with the area. Let me put up another map. There's another map, because there is a third component of this SUP, which is the residential adjacency, requires that the noise not extend past the allowed decibel levels for daytime and nighttime hours. Number one on your screen there, highlighted in yellow is the residential property line, the nearest residential property line. The noise study showed that the project plus noise levels generated from the site due to its location, obviously Kitsky Lane and some other factors didn't impact, even with the doors fully open, it didn't impact the residential over there. However, there are, there is a residential use northeast of the site, I'll just point it out. There, it's a multifamily complex, it's in the, it's in the community commercial zone, so it's not residentially zoned. Nevertheless, we want to ensure that, you know, the noise isn't going to impact them negatively. And so the noise study did show that with the doors open in the rear, that the code-allowed decibel levels would be exceeded. And so that's another reason, there's a condition number five in there requiring only a sole ingress and egress through the front. And with that, I believe that, staff believes that that issue will be mitigated. This did go to the Ward 4 NAB, and was presented to Ward 4 NAB, and the, the NAB was in general support and didn't have any concerns about the project. With the recommended, recommended conditions of approval, staff could make all the applicable findings and recommends approval of the project. And I'm here for any questions that you may have. I'll leave that up so you can look at it.
Thank you, Kyle. Before I open this up for public comment, I'd like to ask the commissioners for disclosures, starting with Commissioner Olivas.
Commissioner Olivas, I visited the site.
Commissioner Griffiths, as did I.
Mr. Johnson, no disclosures?
Mr. Gower, no disclosures.
Mr. Hawkins visited the site.
Commissioner Wieske, as did I.
Thank you. Michelle, do we have any request to speak forms on this item?
No, we do not.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to make a public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close that, bring it back to the commission for any questions, comments, or discussions. Mr. Gower?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kyle, question regarding condition number five. And it's, it's a question on the wording, and it may seem fairly nuanced, and I understand what the condition is doing. It's reducing the potential for noise to escape through the, that south, their northeast side there towards those residential units. Do you think that the language in that condition is, is clear enough that the door needs to be kept shut? So it says ingress and egress is limited, but it doesn't say that the door needs to be kept shut. So like, it can't be propped open for ventilation?
Yeah, I apologize, I didn't, I didn't, I just realized after you said that that I didn't discuss that in the staff report. But Kyle Chisholm, Assistant Planner, for the record, the applicant has installed an automatic door closing system on, that was required by the Fire Department, as well as an alarm system on those doors that would, if they're left open, it emits a loud noise. They might be able to kind of give a little bit more detail, but that's my understanding on those doors. So I don't think that they would be able to be left open.
Okay, that's great. I guess the next question then is, does that technology or requirement for that kind of technology need to run with the, the SUP?
It, it's my understanding that fire was requiring those doors to be as such, just for an emergency egress only. I don't anticipate that it would be a problem, you know, modifying the condition to say that they be, remain shut. Only, only issue I see with that is that I, I didn't think it was really necessary to restrict all access through those doors. And so that might be somewhat of an enforcement issue if you, if you, because the automatic closing system's already installed, I guess we could condition it to be maintained, but being that it could still be used for deliveries and employee entrance and such, I think it could cause an enforcement issue.
Okay. Thanks, Kyle. Commissioner Hawkins?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Kyle, given the fact that all these night, nightclubs over the last three or four years have had major fires and people die, I myself would like to see the egress or the ingress at the front, and in case of fire, egress through the rear and the front. Is that what we talked about before? Okay?
Yes, sir.
And what's the capacity of the inside of the banquet hall?
The current capacity is 99 with the current situation. I had discussion with Fire Department regarding an ability to increase that, and a sprinkler, a commercial sprinkler system would be required, which would be quite an improvement to that space. It's not set up for that right now. I don't anticipate that it would. So it's 99. To answer your other question, the, regarding the emergency egress, condition number five, I wanted to make sure that it was still able to be used for emergency situations, and it's, the language in it spells out that emergency situations would be allowed on those doors.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. Additional questions? Comments?
Mr. Chairman, just to go back to my original question, I would favor just a little bit more language on that item, or condition number five, to say something to the effect of automatic door closing system shall be maintained or shall be provided on the, that rear door. Kyle, you described it pretty well.
I think Commissioner Johnson, I'll, I'll weigh in on that, because actually, Kyle, during your, in your staff report, on page eight, when you talk about condition number five, you say condition number five requires the rear doors to remain, remain closed during events. That's the language you used in the staff report, but when, I think in agreement with Commissioner Gower, it's, it's implied, and certainly, you know, fire's looking at it more from an emergency standpoint than a fire door standpoint, I would think. But I would say that even with something along the lines of, you know, whether it's to remain closed or automatic closer installed, which it sounds like is in keeping with what the Fire Department has already restricted it, I would agree with where you're at with that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's a problem at all. I think that's the intent anyway, so...
And then Commissioner Johnson, I was going to weigh in, since we're on that one item, and I'll just flag it for you, for Commissioner Hawkins... and I'll just flag it for you, for Commissioner Hawkins' comments on the occupant load, 99's not going to change, but update for future staff reports, and I'll have the same comment on the next one, that our current code's actually the 2018 version of the International Fire Code that was adopted at the beginning of the year. So, we just have to make sure that, as we're doing these, you're referencing the 2012. So, the occupant load doesn't change between the two codes, but, and that'll get flagged during the building review, so, just to, while we're in comments instead of question.
Thank you for that, and that's good. Noted.
And I can tell you why I know that, but you can guess.
I, I can guess.
Okay, commissioners, any additional comments, questions, or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion.
Mr. Gower, I'm ready to hear one.
Thank you. In the case of LDC 19-00052 Lilly's Banquet Hall, based upon compliance with the applicable findings and the modification to condition number five to include the language that was discussed, I move to approve the special use permit subject to those conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Gower, have a motion?
Mr. Hawkins, second.
Commissioners, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to next public hearing item, item 7.2, which is case number LDC 19-00040, Mountain View Estates, Unit 4. We'll start with a presentation from the applicant's representative.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Johnson, and commissioners, good evening. John Krompottic with KLS Planning representing the team, including Northern Nevada Homes, I think all of you are familiar with them, Rob Fitzgerald and John Wolfe, and Jason Gillis are civil engineers with us this evening as well. I would like to take just a second, some important stuff, and, you know, this is the first time I worked with Anne Marie, and I, and I thought the staff report was extremely well done, I think that's partially due to her, the department leadership, Ms. Hanson and the format of it, and I, I just really respect that level of professionalism, so thank you for the good work in the analysis and the format, and the way it relates to the master plan, and the development code, and then the findings, it's very well done. So, in summary, you know, SEP for tentative map, and the townhomes actually require an SEP, 69 of them, and then in addition, the SEP for the grading, where we kick in the thresholds over 10 feet, and this is roughly a, actually a 20-acre site, served from Ferrari McLeod. It's sort of a next piece of a master-planned area, zoned SF4. There's the site, you can see Mountain View, Unit 3, that looks to be under construction there, it's very far along, and then Unit 1 and 2, just east of that, again, we had this master planned about 15 years ago for 440-some-odd lots there, and where, you know, a lot has changed since we started this process, but here we are getting far down the road toward the end of development of this, of this general area. There is the master plan, of course, the new master plan, mixed neighborhood, which does allow that range of 8 to 15 corresponding zoning, SF4, it's been around a long time on that property, of course, it's very difficult in this business to get anywhere close to the actual allowed zoning. There's just a difference between lot size and zoning, but we all know that. And in summary of the site plan, this is continuation 4 of Unit 3 in the product type, we did make a change after 1 and 2 to 3, which is this footprint mapping townhome concept. 69 lots on 12 acres usable, so the gross density is about 5 and 1/2, I think it's actually just a little bit less than that. Four parking spaces per home, we spent a lot of time with staff on this because parking is an issue, or it can be an issue, in this case, we have it very well parked at four per home, plus the common on-street, which actually yields about 1.4 spaces per unit, there's 96 spaces there. Footprint mapping, as I mentioned, it's kind of the, it's a type of development, everything else is common area, and then we have a wide range in, in unit sizes and in the number of unit, the number of bedrooms that would be offered. There's a composite, so there's the, there's the MVE4 as proposed, MV3 on the side, you see that green space that's on the east edge of this phase, that's programming for a roadway that will extend directly to Ferrari McLeod, you can kind of see the alignment of the geometry as it would just lend itself to a straight shot north, and then wind into Ferrari McLeod. It's someday, there's an easement challenge, but that would be a good, nice little direct connection as the idea to deal with overall circulation in that area. There is a rendering of the actual units, so that's one shared wall parking, shared, so it does give you plenty of privacy, but still meets the, you know, townhome concept and single-family attached is the idea. That was done in, again, Unit 3 phase, and now we're continuing that into this next one. That is all I have, so I'll be here for any questions, I'm sure you'll have some, so thank you very much for your time, commissioners.
Okay, thank you, John. I'll get the staff presentation and call you back with questions. Anne Marie, I don't need to give you a lead-in, John already did for you this evening.
Yes, and thank you, John, and thank you for your overview of the project. I'll try not to repeat anything and just go over a few points here as it relates to the findings. Michelle, is my, that's okay. This is Anne Marie Lane, for the record. And while she's pulling that up, I do want to point out and apologize to the commission and to the public, on the proposed motion that I wrote in the staff report, it says, "Based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the tentative map subject to the following conditions." It should read, "I move to approve the tentative map and special use permit subject to the Okay, so, getting started, essentially, this is a request for a tentative map to develop the 69-lot, single-family residential subdivision. A tentative map application is required for subdividing a parcel into five or more lots, and it's a special use permit, special use permits are required for both residential townhomes and fills of 10 feet or greater. This application was deemed complete on February 14th, it was reviewed at the Ward 4 NAB meeting on March 21st, and here we are at the public hearing on April 17th. Two things essentially that I want to point out, one are the location of the fill areas that are 10 feet or greater, so what I tried to do on this slide, I know it's a little bit hard to read, is to highlight those areas where that fill is greater, and I wanted to point out that that area is necessary to accommodate the proposed street and utility access road. So, in general, it's a fairly minimal area on the site that has those fills. The second thing I wanted to point out is condition number 13, staff recommends that the, this condition requires the applicant to provide a secondary access across Lot 69 to connect to the Ferrari McLeod Boulevard. I tried to put in some arrows, you can see that, John pointed out that access as well. I do want to put on the record, staff received one email from a member of the public who was concerned about secondary access. I informed the member of the public about this condition, they were also concerned about parking, and I explained that the parking does remeet, meet code requirements, their concern was that in Phase 1 of the subdivision, it's their observation that the owners don't use the parking garage for parking, and it amounts to more people parking on the street, but that's not something that we can regulate through the special use permit process. That, the last thing was that staff was able to make all the applicable findings for both the tentative map and both the SEP requirements. As such, staff recommends approval of the tentative map and special use permit with conditions. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Anne Marie. We will call you back with questions, I'm sure. Thank you. Okay, for, before I open this up for public comment, I'll bring it back to the commissioner for disclosures, starting with Commissioner Wiskey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I visited the site and received an email.
Mr. Hawkins spoke with the applicant's representative and familiar with the site.
Mr. Gower, previously visited the site, spoke with applicant's representative, and received an email.
Commissioner Johnson received and read an email and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Griffith spoke with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Olivas, I visited the site, I received email and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Okay, thank you very much. Michelle, do we have any request to speak forums on this item?
Not for this item.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to make public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment, bring it back to the commission for questions. I'd like to get us started. Commissioner Wiskey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Condition number 11 excludes riprap as part of the initial mass grading permit. Why are we excluding it? Why wouldn't the riprap be an important part of the civil site improvements?
I, I'm, for clarification, are you talking about condition 11?
Condition number 11.
It's my understanding that it's not prohibiting riprap, it's that it's requiring the applicant to demonstrate that the color of the riprap will match the natural landscape. That's my understanding, and for a little bit of background, this was a condition that was carried over from Unit 3.
Okay, all right. And then I had a question for you on parking. There was specific comments in your staff report about a 20-foot driveway, and that was also in regards to the email then, that came in from the general public, a 20-foot-long driveway doesn't allow for a full-size vehicle to be parked there without extending over sidewalks, or could be encroaching into the street. How did you make that finding? How did staff come up with that being acceptable?
Sure, the finding is based on code requirements, and currently, our code does not require driveways to be 24 feet in length, the code requirement is 20 feet, and so, therefore, staff made the finding that it met Reno Municipal Code requirements.
Based upon current code?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, no further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiskey. Additional questions? Mr. Gower?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anne Marie, I have a question regarding, so it relates to finding I of the tentative map, which is recommendations and comments of those entities and persons reviewing the tentative map pursuant to NRS. And we received comments in our staff report in Appendix E, particularly those from the Air Quality Management District, and some of those recommendations to implement their ozone advance path forward are fairly prescriptive, and I know this is a, a letter that's showing up in a lot of our staff reports now, and we've gotten presentations from, from Air Quality Management District on this, and I'm wondering how staff is incorporating those or thinking about incorporating those to meet that particular finding. And I ask on this one because I didn't see any of the recommendations necessarily incorporated into the project.
Commissioner Gower, it is my understanding that at this point, the comments from Washoe County Air Quality Control are recommendations, and I'm going to ask Ms. Hanson.
I was waiting. Claudia Anderson, planning manager. As Anne Marie was mentioning, they are recommendations, we have the responsibility to review these and look at the nexus between the project in front of us and the findings. In this case, we didn't find a link there that we could have conditioned it at this point, so that's why we didn't have the conditions in there, or a related condition specifically on this project.
Yep. No, and I appreciate that. Again, just for disclosure, John, I voiced this to John too, and I, you know, feel free to join in, John, if you want to comment on this, but, and, Mr. Chairman, I apologize if this is getting in a little bit to discussion here, but we have these recommendations from air quality, and it's my understanding that as part of one of the previous phases, and I may be wrong on this, but as part of one of the previous phases, that EV charging infrastructure has been considered or incorporated into the development proposal, if that's not the case, feel free to correct me, but it is something that can be done, and I know that they're recommendations, but we have that particular finding, finding I for tentative maps, that requires us to look at those recommendations. So, my question and the discussion here is, I guess, going beyond this project, and it's sort of a broader question to staff of, we're starting to understand the potential urgency, I would say, or implications, I guess is a better word, of, you know, our ozone attainment situation, so how are we as a city incorporating these recommendations into our, you know, proposals and, or into our approvals?
So, we've been, we've been having this discussion in-house, and agree with your comments, of course, but conditioning a specific project on it, when we haven't conditioned other projects on it in a similar way, is, gets a little questionable. I would recommend that we bring this up with the Title 18 update, and it might be something that we want to approach in a more cohesive way across the board, in the, in appropriate locations, and bring in Washoe County for that discussion during the Title 18 update, to see where we can include those requirements in code, so it's, so it's, so it's embedded in our code, and is, is considered equally across the board, and in the most effective way and efficient way possible.
Okay, thank you.
And you can actually bring that up during your next agenda.
I think I will.
Yeah, okay. Just, you know, thought you might.
Thanks, Anne Marie.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, any additional comments or questions?
I'm going to make one comment to you, Anne Marie, I have been corrected up here, and I want to compliment you on the language that you've got in there for your fire code. Apparently, the building code was updated at the beginning of the year, but the fire department has not yet updated the fire code until July 1st.
Oh, interesting.
So, the language requiring the 2012 code is from the fire department and is technically correct. However, the language that I have just recommended to Claudia that we use in the future is the language that you provided in the staff report, recommending using the code as adopted at the time of plan of submit, plan submittal, so.
And let the record show that is a slash chairman slash architect.
Exactly right.
And we'll pass that on to Kyle, too.
Thank you. Please, please pass that along to Kyle, I'll, I'll contact him directly, yes.
Not that I was double-checking.
No.
Your comment was during the presentation.
So, let the record show that the building code has been updated.
Thank you.
Which, yes.
Commissioners, now that I've said my mea culpa's, is there any further comments, questions, discussions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wiskey?
Thank you. In the case of LDC 19-00040, Mountain View Estates, Unit 4, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the tentative map subject to the following conditions, and I can make all of the findings.
Commissioner Wiskey, I would remind you of the revisions to the motion that were presented at the beginning of the staff report to include the special use permit as part tentative map and special use permit.
Included.
Thank you.
Commissioner Griffith, I'll second, and I can make all the findings.
Hey, commissioners, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gower, I just echoed the, John's comments on the quality of the staff report, I thought it was really, really well done.
I would agree with that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Good luck. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Good luck with your project.
And we do offer car charges. We do.
Okay.
We don't have much demand for them, I must tell you, and it surprises me, but we do offer them.
Thank you. Yet. Okay.
But we just get a little more mess. I mean, we're more than happy to put it in if everybody else is.
Okay, Commissioners, I have been asked by staff to take a momentary recess before we move on to the next item in order to get ready, so I'm going to ask for a five-minute break to 7:15 before we come back for our next item. All right, Michelle, are we good? Okay. Nathan's over there, Arlo's here. Okay. I will bring this back, bring the meeting back to order, and we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, Item 8, the zoning code renovation staff report and presentation. Arlo, welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. Arlo Stockham, Community Development Department Director. We're going to handle this a little differently than some typical presentations. Nathan Gilbert is over in the special box with Michelle on the computer. He's kind of our lead planner in terms of day-to-day outreach. And if we want to do a deeper dive into different issues or look at maps in more detail, he's there on the computer and can dive into that and may also be answering questions from that position. Claudia may cover some questions. I'll just kind of go over the overview presentation. Kelly Wilson back there on her computer has kind of been heading up our public outreach efforts. I'll try to summarize what we've heard, and she may pop in at that point. So maybe a little less formal than we typically do. So to dive into it, here we are. This is the first of a series of these kind of interim meetings delving into high-level issues in the zoning code update, essentially having ongoing communication as we translate the more general master plan policies into what will ultimately be quite specific ordinances. So this is kind of the interim step where we want to present to the community, to you, to the City Council kind of the issues we're starting to bump into as we develop zoning code components, some of the choices that we have, the directions we're thinking we should probably go, get your feedback, get direction on where we go on some of these sensitive issues and high-level topics. And ultimately, that will guide a development of the initial draft code modules and the work that follows by the Technical Advisory Committee and others. Our hope isn't to get down into a micro level of detail on each topic, but what we would very much appreciate is on these bigger issues in this meeting, it's going to be a lot about consolidation of different districts and bulk and intensity and some of those high-level matters related to zoning districts and uses, in particular, the non-residential and mixed-use areas. You know, what districts we have, what are the general bulk and intensity standards, kind of those priorities, and help steer us in a direction that's so that when there's actual code to review, hopefully, the general direction and high-level topics will be not hugely controversial, and we can get into the details and ultimately get to an adopted code in about 14 months. I try to put this in every presentation just to remind us what we're doing. A big emphasis is ease of use, predictability, transparency, and implementing the policies in the master plan. Beyond that, there's various topics that have been discussed that may or may not be included. Our schedule for these interim meetings and code is being drafted while we're doing this, so this isn't delaying the overall project, is in front of you. We're looking at the non-residential and mixed-use zoning issues tonight. That'll be going to City Council in three weeks. Next meeting a month from now will involve neighborhood zoning topics, getting a little more sensitive, some of the issues that have stirred some controversy over the years. Then we start to get into the development standards, which really is where we're getting the most interest, and probably some of the more consequential discussions will occur at those June and July meetings, the procedures following that, and a contingency meeting at the end. And by the way, feel free to interrupt me and just ask questions if we need to, but I probably have about 10 minutes here. I'll do an overview, and there we have it. So the first topic, I'm just going to kind of talk through the topics that are covered in the issue sheets that are attached to your staff report. The first topic is the downtown areas. In this topic, the master plan is really pretty specific and prescriptive about what to do in the downtown area. And in terms of the zoning districts and uses, not quite as much discretion translating plan to code as some of the other topics. Just in summary, the master plan called out the new, six new districts for the downtown area. A lot of continuation of current standards, probably the more significant changes are the master plan called for some reductions in intensity in the Pawning District and a little more focus on university-supporting uses, student housing, probably less gaming, things like that up in the University District. The specific design standards will come forward for you at later meetings. The airport areas, the code assessment report calls for the merging of the two distinct airport overlay zoning districts that we have now. We have one for the Reno Tahoe Airport and one for the Reno Sted Airport. They're quite comparable, and the proposal was as part of this simplification to consolidate those into a single zone district. We understand that's the recommendation of the Airport Authority. We've been in communication with them, and so that's the recommendation moving forward at this point. Urban mixed-use zoning districts start to get a little more complex in terms of the choices in front of us. There are currently 12 zoning overlay districts in what we're calling the urban mixed-use master plan area. The code assessment report suggested that we look at consolidating all those areas into a single zoning district. As we dove into that concept, we identified basically the implications of doing so, and we're recommending two adjustments to what was proposed in the code assessment report. And I'll get into the rationale for these later, but to make a long story short, we're recommending the retention of the two zoning districts covering the midtown area. They're considerably more restrictive than the other zoning districts that we have in place now. So if we merge those with a standard urban mixed-use, we'd either have to tighten up restrictions in the other areas pretty considerably or relax the current restrictions in midtown. And we just felt it was sufficiently different, given the residential interface and the current relatively recent plans that were developed for those areas, to retain those and possibly apply them to other areas that may emerge with similar considerations. And also an adjustment for the convention center area. That was a little bit of gray area, both in the master plan and in the code assessment report. It's kind of in the middle of urban and suburban. And in looking into it, the core portions of that convention center plan, the Atlantis, the convention center itself, Meadowwood Mall, both the current development standards and the overall context of development seemed more in line with the urban districts than with the suburban. So we are recommending that those be included in a urban master plan designation and zoning designation. Some other edges of the convention center area are slated for rezonings to other districts, largely residential, and that'll be addressed at a future meeting. Here are the maps of the urban mixed-use areas. Those two purplish colors in the middle would be the two midtown districts. They're really different because there's such a tight interface between established neighborhoods and the Virginia Street corridor. The darker purple is the midtown commercial, which basically allows taller buildings along Virginia Street but not further out. And then that pinkish color is kind of a hybrid district between mixed-use and residential. It's called mixed-use, or it's called the midtown residential sub-district. So it didn't really fit cleanly in any of our zoning categories. And that's where that is. Small text here, if you're like me, you may have trouble reading it. This is in your staff report packet, too. But just a comparison of the current standards in the various districts that would be consolidated into the urban mixed-use. You can see in terms of, there's some similarities, but also some variations that are going to need to be pretty much standardized if we merge these into a single district. Generally, the minimum densities are in the 14 to 18 units per acre range and a floor area ratio range, and there's some provisions for exceptions. These generally don't have a maximum density. Some of them have some additive requirements on height, others don't have height limits, and there are some... on height, others don't have height limits, and there are some supplemental requirements that differ some in the different districts. I want to call attention to the last two at the bottom. That's for the stretch of Virginia Street between midtown down to the convention center, and it's kind of a hybrid, it was a little bit of a tough call for us to even, you know, what do we recommend there? We like the consolidation of districts and the simplification and consistency, but we also don't want to kind of standardize everything and not, you know, acknowledge the differences in the community. Those areas, they're not as limiting as midtown, and I would urge against including them in the midtown district because that could interfere with a number of projects that are already in process. We're comfortable putting it in the urban mixed-use, which would likely result in a modest additional allowances for development, but only in conjunction with some enhanced residential adjacency standards. This differs from midtown in that they're larger, generally larger land holdings, but they do have residential interface, especially to the west, they do have somewhat tighter restrictions in place right now, and if the commission and ultimately the council isn't comfortable with some modest increases in development opportunities there, probably an additional zoning district would be the way to go. But just to repeat, we're, as a staff, comfortable merging that in urban mixed-use and addressing those interface issues with adjacency standards. Those standards for density and intensity are spelled out in great detail in the master plan, including language for exceptions, the actual language from the master plan are on your issue sheets, they're summarized here, a minimum of 18 units per acre, minimum floor area ratios, higher along the corridor streets, lower elsewhere, and very importantly, there are exceptions allowed for historic buildings, for adaptive reuse, for transitional areas. Basically, the intensity standards would, are called for for new development projects, tear-down rebuilds, should build to those intensities, but if you have residential interface areas, or if you're trying to repurpose an existing building, we want to allow alternative densities to move forward. And additionally, there's discussions during the regional plan update of possibly loosening up some of the regional plan requirements on minimum densities. This master plan language is based on the current regional plan requirements, and we, as a staff, feel that we should perhaps allow the opportunity for lower intensity, if allowed by the regional plan, while still in aggregate moving towards significantly higher intensities in the corridor, but just project-by-project flexibility, so it's not kind of a, if someone wants to do a plaza with a lower-intensity project, you know, that wouldn't be prohibited on individual parcels, we'd be looking at, what we're advocating for in the regional plan is to measure density on a broader geographic scale and measure positive trends more broadly, rather than project-by-project, parcel-by-parcel, so that as a whole, these areas would be intensifying over time, but as you're reviewing individual projects, you'd have more flexibility to approve less or more, depending on the unique situations. We're suggesting a discretionary review process of some type for buildings over 85 feet. Truthfully, there's not a lot of market demand for above five stories until you get into much higher buildings, just because of the cost of construction, going to metal frame structures, but this would allow by right, you know, fairly significant developments, we'd probably see five-story buildings coming in and encouraged in that area, and some of that would be allowed without any review by this body, they could just go straight to a building permit. Residential adjacency standards are gonna be a big important issue for these mixed-use areas, and we'll get into the details of it when we do development standards and when the actual codes come out, but our recommendation is to develop adjacency standards that apply to all residential zoning districts, not just single-family, and address, you know, height and transitional height limits are gonna be a big one, but also noisy, smelly, the types of uses you wouldn't want right next to your house in all likelihood. Now, within the mixed-use core areas, if you want to move into a condo on Virginia Street, you should expect a bar downstairs and noise and trash trucks coming through, that's part of the vibrant mixed-use environment that the master plan calls for, but if you're in a residential area, maybe a quarter mile away from Virginia Street and you're adjoining some mixed-use, there should be some transitional limits and additional restrictions for those areas. We wanted to start raising the topic of auto-oriented uses, and there's some variation in these overlay districts of where gas stations and drive-throughs and things like that are allowed. As a general framework, we'll get into the more suburban districts later, we'd like to encourage the auto-oriented uses in more traditional commercial areas, and go somewhere between discouraging and prohibiting them along these mixed-use urban corridors. Our recommendation for the urban mixed-use area, and by the way, that's largely already in place, for instance, most of this urban mixed-use district does not allow auto-oriented uses, so our recommendation is that gas stations, drive-throughs, auto dealerships, things like that, in the mixed-use urban district, be allowed within a quarter mile of a freeway off-ramp or east of I-580, but not in areas like right across from the Pepper Mill or midtown, most of those areas are currently prohibited. So I believe this would be a modest, very modest tightening of the current rules, there may be a few areas where you could build a gas station today where you couldn't if this moves forward, but it's pretty reflective of what we had. And just before I get to you, Kevin, we also, we wanted to broach the discussion of perhaps managing drive-through facilities for non-food service uses, like pharmacies in particular, and perhaps bank drive-throughs, maybe allow those a little more broadly than the next McDonald's or Burger King drive-through, and yet, so perhaps in the urban mixed-use area, a pharmacy with a drive-through may be appropriate if it's designed with a pedestrian orientation and the drive-through is really kind of a small accessory part of the use, not the predominant use, and it's maybe tucked behind the building, not right up against the street, things like that. Were you...
Yes, Arlo, Commissioner Wysocki, for the record, if I understood what you just said, the auto-oriented use permitted east of I-80 or within a quarter mile of the freeway, how far east are you talking?
It's east of I-580, old 395, let me pull up the map. So that's largely the area on Mill Street heading over towards Terminal Way and the Airport around the Grand Sierra. Auto-oriented uses seem very appropriate there, they seem appropriate...
They are appropriate, or are not appropriate.
They do seem appropriate, east of I-580.
Then I misunderstood what you said. What I heard and what you said were two different things, and I was trying to think of the link over on the east side of the valley, which is becoming, you know, used more often, what a great place for auto-oriented uses next to that, I'd hate to see it restricted and kept close to I-580.
Well, that's one of the challenges, you know, if we're gonna do a single zoning district for urban mixed-use, which includes the Grand Sierra and areas around that, and it includes some of the freeway off-ramps along I-580, you know, that's a little different than the core of Virginia Street, so that's where we can use locational standards within the same district, and using a locational standard when we get into things like the properties currently zoned CC and AC may also be appropriate for certain uses. You know, the alternative, these differences, that's why I think the city ended up with so many different zoning districts, because that area's a little different than South Virginia Street and the convention center.
Thank you.
So where was I here? Okay, so I think that pretty much covered the urban mixed-use areas and a summary of our suggestions for that land use category. Suburban mixed-use, you know, these are kind of some of the trickier district consolidations that we get into. The code assessment report suggested that we explore merging all of the suburban mixed-use districts together with AC and CC into a new suburban mixed-use zoning district. That has some pros and cons, like everything else. Our general recommendation is to go ahead and retain what would be a general commercial or something like that for areas like Kitsky Lane, for the larger shopping centers that are above neighborhood commercial but kind of scattered around the community, that would allow a more, you know, automobile-oriented design, parking lots in front, wouldn't be so restrictive with the pedestrian orientation, and would also generally have lower buildings than the suburban mixed-use, and would be more appropriate and where we would hope to direct auto-oriented uses towards, so the gas stations and the car dealerships would be easier to establish in the general commercial district. And then the mixed-use suburban district, there are four, this is, I'm just gonna flip down to the map, it's largely South Virginia Street, there are four existing zoning districts, that pink area that we would, we're very comfortable consolidating into a similar district. I believe I have a comparison table here for the suburban mixed-use areas, you know, the intensity standards again differ a little bit, but not a whole lot, and our proposal would be to, you know, be a little flexible in these suburban mixed-use areas, it would be higher intensity than general commercial, perhaps taller buildings, which is consistent with the current requirements, they generally don't have maximums, but also not require minimums, it would kind of be a hybrid between general commercial and the more urban districts, and we're suggesting a discretionary review process for any buildings over 55 feet, and again, adjacency standards and new design standards would come forward with later sections of code. Did I miss something on that? And neighborhood commercial would remain largely unchanged. There has been some discussion about potentially allowing increased building height and intensity in neighborhood commercial, which has some merits. Honestly, as I, I'll get into some of the input I've received going out to the public, you know, there's some pushback about that as well. I guess our general recommendation would be to keep that at, I believe it's a three-story height limit, but seek opportunities to identify additional parcels for neighborhood commercial uses, but not a kind of significant intensification of areas currently zoned neighborhood commercial. It would still be kind of a lower scale of development that's more compatible with residential The maps, you can see these commercial districts are scattered throughout town, and you probably can't even see neighborhood commercial on this map scale, but we just felt a little discomfort having all these areas in the same zone district because they have so many differences. Nothing wrong with doing it, just there would be implications, we'd have to have comparable design and bulk and intensity standards in all these different areas if we went with a single district, in general, some variation with locational standards, but we looked at that table already. Moving on to the office districts, there's a general emphasis in the master plan of expanding office uses in proximity to homes so people don't have to drive as far to get to work. I think there's broad, broad support for doing that, the question becomes how aggressive? The recommendation from the report was to consider deleting both of the professional or both of the office districts, PO and GO, that PO-zoned properties would be, offices would be allowed in the residential districts, and there would be no office district, so residential districts would essentially be residential plus office. We internally debated this quite a bit, there's not a right or a wrong answer to it, and we generally landed at the place where perhaps mixed residential master plan designations, full-scale offices do seem appropriate, but when you start to think about the more suburban, single-family master plan areas, you know, do we want to essentially allow standalone offices in those areas? It could be done with locational standards to require them to be on a corner or on a major street or things like that, but this would be introducing significant new uses in single-family neighborhoods where they're not currently allowed. I was, you know, took to heart the process on ADUs that you all went through and some of the concerns that emerged about, you know, potential neighborhood impacts of intensifications, and we kind of feel that live-work units and perhaps expanded opportunities to have offices makes a lot of sense, but when you take away the residential components, so no one's there at night, I don't know. So in general, we are recommending keeping the professional office district, not to say we shouldn't expand offices within the residential districts, but there would, there may still be a role for an office district, in particular in the single-family areas. General office, the code assessment report didn't really get into the parcel-specific situations with general office properties, it's a higher-intensity zoning district than professional office. I think there was some language about looking at merging those with residential districts as well, but in looking at the parcels, we're comfortable eliminating GO, but we'd like to return to you with kind of site-specific rezoning proposals, some of them are surrounded by industrial commercial and could probably just go to IC and be okay, others like along South McCarran Boulevard or Moana, maybe better in a general commercial or a mixed-use or what I'll touch on later, a mixed employment zoning designation. So those are generally higher in scale than would be allowed in residential districts and should probably fit in one of the non-residential zones. Here's a map that just went a little off-screen, the orangish-red is professional office, it's clustered, you know, right in neighborhood areas, kind of on the transitions, with some scattered professional office in adjoining single-family areas around the community. The general office is the purple and is higher intensity and located along arterials primarily. Industrial, I, excuse me, the I District, straight industrial would remain for the heaviest types of uses in the community, IC would remain for slightly smaller-scale industry with some additional office and commercial uses. There was a recommendation to eliminate IB and merge it with IC, which in many areas makes a lot of sense, in other areas, IB is developed as office, especially the area, I'll flip to on the map. Is there a way to move this on screen? Oh, just on the edge of the screen there, the IB is in blue. This IB area, I actually met yesterday with the owner of that center, and they've developed it out with office uses and don't really want industrial uses in that area. Other, you can't even see it, but around I-580, Mill Street exit area, there's a bunch of IB in there that is surrounded with IC, there's some down near the Double R Longley Lane area, so to make a long story short, instead of just summarily rezoning IB to IC, we are, and one step further, the code assessment report kind of introduced the concept, something to the effect of we may want to consider a mixed employment district, and as a staff, we talked it over and we like that. Mixed employment would be a broader designation than IB, not as limiting, it would be targeted towards the innovation areas, flex space, some lighter commercial, not so much the industrial uses, maybe small-scale kind of contractor yard stuff, incubator business space, things like that, probably appropriate for the Dandini Regional Center, probably appropriate for areas like that, Mill and East McCarran area there that's primarily office now, so some modest increases in allowed uses, but not the types of industrial uses that are allowed in IC. So essentially, we'd be replacing IB with IC, or with mixed employment, and doing some parcel redesignations of current IB to IC. The map, the dark gray is the straight industrial, oh, I also should point out, up in the stead area, there's a buffer of IB between industrial and unincorporated residential areas, which we also don't really feel IC would be the best buffer there, that might be better as a mixed employment or something like that, where it's a lighter transitional use between residential and industrial. transitional use between residential and industrial. Hotel casino, pretty simple, no substantive change. There's only one area left that has hotel casino zoning. All the others are covered with overlay zoning districts. We recommend we use an overlay district to deal with gaming and essentially structure it, so there's no major changes to where hotel casinos are allowed or what they would be. We may get into some design standards that would influence what they look like, but no major changes at the zoning level. Before we get into the public input and discussion, I just want to, excuse me while I grab, give you a brief summary of some of the public input we've been hearing. We've been going out to the NABs. We put a survey and kind of a solicitation for comments out to our mailing group and have it online, and just been speaking with individuals, and just wanted to give you kind of a flavor for what we're hearing for your consideration. A lot of the input doesn't directly relate to the items on the agenda tonight. Lot, a lot of comments about reducing parking and the need to do something with parking to better accommodate redevelopment. We'll talk about that later. Significant number of comments promoting flexible design standards to facilitate and not be an impediment to infill development. Significant comments focusing on neighborhood preservation and preserving the character of neighborhoods. That's kind of what needs to be balanced with these intensification options. In particular, accessory dwelling units remains a very hot topic. Neighborhood plans has received some discussion from neighborhood folks who kind of like them. And there's some concerns with the bulk and scale of some of the newer homes coming into older neighborhoods, and some input that it's just too much, too big, and incompatible with the fabric of their neighborhood. So, we're hearing that. We're kind of hearing both sides of it. It's a crux issue, you know? People want to be able to intensify and rebuild and have a vibrant kind of urban area, but at the same time, there's some concerns that maybe our design standards allow a little too much looming over people's backyards, those types of issues. Hearing a lot about flooding. Hearing comments about encouraging and not impeding sustainable design and green energy and things like that. Topics more specifically related to our meeting agenda tonight is, and the surveys that we sent out related to these topics. A lot of it is allowing, support for allowing intensity in the mixed-use areas, and also not getting too prescriptive on the development standards to be an impediment to quality design. We have some ideas that we'll want to discuss with you at future meetings on how perhaps to do that. Got a couple, it might be a property owner there, but some comments about not reducing the intensity in the Pawning District of downtown. It's currently allowed pretty tall buildings, and the master plan calls for smaller buildings. Some comments supporting the idea of more offices in close proximity to houses. Support for simplification of the ordinances. And a topic came up at the last council meeting. It isn't in our presentation, but the specific plan district designation is proposed to be retired. There's a lot of SPDs on the ground now, and it was kind of a district that could be customized for unique situations, and I think the feeling was it kind of ran amok and perhaps was getting into some legal jeopardy of contract zoning. But at the same time, we've heard some input that some folks may want to retain a tool for more flexible palette of uses, or so that projects in unique situations, this came up on the Dickerson Road project, that, hey, that's kind of a unique area, is CC a little too much, neighborhood commercial not enough. You know, without a SPD, really the only tool we have to do that is the PUD, which I think the city's trying to discourage and put more guidelines to. So, this package will have reduced tools for kind of those flexible districts like what SPDs were in the past. So, I don't know just what that means, but if the commission has input on that, you know, basically, if you're comfortable that projects can fit in these districts as they're crafted, we don't need an SPD or something like it. If you want some tool for more flexibility, I think staff, Claudia could elaborate, doesn't like how the old SPD systems were working. It was very difficult to administer and not really good framework, but perhaps a more structured system for flexibility may have some merit for discussion. I think that wraps up my presentation. Open it up to input, questions, however this goes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Arlo. We've got a lot to digest here. Before we start hitting with some questions, I would like to have one request to speak for him on this, so I'd like to get the public input on that. So, question to speak for him from Lori Ray.
Hi, my name's Lori Ray, and I'm here on behalf of Scenic Nevada. I just came tonight, originally I was just going to come to listen to see how everything's fleshing out and see where you are in the process, but I got a call today from a supporter that said, did you know that a new billboard was going up in this area? And I said, no, so I ran out and took a picture. I just wanted to show it to you. And I know that you're dealing in reports and things like that, and this is like on-the-ground stuff. And so, when, I don't really have anything to ask you to do except for consider scenic vistas and scenic views around town that are being spoiled by billboards. And of course, as you know, we have, I guess, less than 40 bank receipts left that can be put up around town. So, this one is, this is one side of it, and there's the other side. So, you can see that, you can see that billboards do block our beautiful views here in Reno. And whatever you can do as you go move through this whole rezoning process, let me just back up one second. Back when you were looking at the master plan, there was a lot of residential, residents that said that they were opposed to billboards. So, we know that that's established here in town, and we do have the ban. So, when you start looking at zoning districts again, and I know that sign codes down the road, but think about when you rename these zones and put things in these buckets, that maybe you can find a way to put in something about scenic character, scenic views that need to be protected. And then, when the signage comes through, that might be one way that you can bring the signs down and eliminate some billboards' locations. And I can't think of anything else except for to thank you all for the vote on, this is another issue, on the drive-through signs, the 150-knit. I never, I meant to write to all, every, thank you all, that was really wonderful what you did. It's a real step forward, and the city council, as you know, adopted it without comment, and so we'll see how that works out. And I'm hoping that staff will come forward and tell you that it's fine at 150 knots, and maybe that's something we'll look at when we look at the sign code. And I guess the last thing is, when is the sign code going to come? How much farther after this process? Is it way down the road, or is it part of this process? And that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lori. Michelle, do we have any additional requests to speak for on this item? Anyone else wishing to make public comment? Okay. Well, state your name, and then when you're finished, I'll have you fill out the form with Michelle. You know the drill.
I appreciated hearing the report from Arlo. I was at my NAB meeting for the very...
Please state your name, just so we show...
Oh, Leah Sanders, Reno resident. I was at my NAB Ward 5 meeting and heard a very brief unveiling, and at that time was given a link to get on the mailing list. I would like the city, whoever, whether it's Cali or whoever, to make those links a little easier to navigate. Maybe it was okay if you were on a mainframe, but if you were on your phone, oh my gosh, to get on a mailing list was a job, and for someone like me, a real job. So, I think that maybe those things need to be tested. Maybe you need to get on the next-door blogs and advise people of these meetings. I mean, you know, I'm glad I'm here because it is an education. It's an important education for the future of our city. And while the plant, you know, while I have great faith mostly in the planning department, not all the time, as you all well know, RGJ, radio, TV, you know, when it gets down the line, six months from now, it's too late. People will come out and they'll be all upset. Why not get them involved, or at least let them know what's going, the meetings that are going on now? Thank you.
Thank you, Leah. Any additional comments? Okay, I'll close public comment. And what I'd like to do, if we could put up the last slide of the presentation. I think what I'd like us to do, these were all of the items and the different districts that were up for discussion, so I'd like to kind of tick those off one at a time, if we have any comments on those, or if not, and we just support the presentation that's come before us, just so that we can give staff and council some direction. So, if there's no oppositions to that, I will basically start right at the top and see how commission feels about the proposed work for the downtown districts based on the downtown plan. Are there any comments or concerns with what staff is proposing for that? Mr. Gower?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Arlo, I know I brought this up when we met one-on-one, but just, and you clarified it a little bit in your presentation, but campus-oriented uses, I think, just so we're clear on that to, you know, the commission, city council, the public, what we're talking about there and what our goals are with campus-oriented uses.
We'll return with specifics in the draft code, but in general, up in that interface, we're trying to get the university to expand south towards downtown, so we would see probably no casinos there, a greater focus on residential, commercial, office uses, the types of uses that students would utilize. There's some early discussions of a new parking ramp in that area, and perhaps some transportation work with RTC to tie the areas along the freeway and south of the freeway together with UNR a little better. There's some multifamily housing projects in the works now in that area, and it would be, you know, not appropriate for the casinos and such that are in the current district, as I understand.
Would you consider, maybe not a casino, but what about a nightclub, or a bar, or those type of uses? I mean, are those campus-oriented uses? Maybe, maybe for some, maybe for some.
Personally, I would think so, but that's open for discussion.
Okay. I mean, that's kind of what I'm talking about, is it seems like it's a, it's a big bucket that we're using there, and I'm not quite sure what it...
It would be a pretty broad range of uses, I'd anticipate.
Thank you.
Mr., is there any additional comments on that? Generally supportive of what we're looking at here? Not seeing any opposition. Okay, thank you. The next one is the airport districts. I believe the main idea behind this is to combine into a single airport district. Any comments, concerns from council, or, excuse me, from commission as far as that goes? Commissioner Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Arlo and I discussed this the other day, the airport districts, and I feel there's enough differences between the two to keep them separated instead of combined.
Yeah, I guess maybe I have a question for staff on that in terms of what the significant differences are between the two of them. I understand the geographical differences, but with respect to allowable uses?
Well, allowable uses, I mean, eventually, we're going to go ahead and start approving developments around the airport property instead, and I don't think you can do that for the Reno Airport down here off Terminal Way. I mean, we're talking about 17, 1800 acres plus of acreage out there in the state airport area that can be developed other than what's going on at Reno Tahoe Airport. And I think that needs to be separate because they are their own entities, even though they're the Reno Airport. They have enough distance there that they need to stay separated instead of combined.
Okay. I guess, I guess my question, Nathan, would you, I guess my question back again was, we're looking at zoning districts here, so what's the significant difference in terms of what's allowable or what the development standards are between the two currently?
Sir, Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. With the current, overlay standards are substantially similar. They both allow for mixed use, and they both allow for the option of developing under industry, the various industrial districts. The existing, the downtown airport has some standards that are more urban in nature and deal more with urban interface. The draft code evaluation and working with the airport staff felt like they're substantially similar enough that they could be combined. However, we'll continue to evaluate and work with the airport and take Planning Commission direction on that, but current overlay standards, as far as allowed uses and design standards, are substantially similar.
Okay. Thank you. So, I guess with that, I'm hearing some opposition from Commissioner Hawkins with respect to combining them into one. Additional comments from commissioners with respect to direction to staff? Anyone else, I guess, feeling that they should remain separate along with what Commissioner Hawkins has stated?
Mr. Chairman, question. Nathan, are there differences in standards relative to like hotels or tourist accommodation in the two? It seems like the, you know, the main airport downtown would have more of an emphasis on those types of uses.
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. I don't know that offhand. I could fact-check that for you. Do you want to come back?
Just curious, that's the only thing that really stood out for me, Mr. Chairman, is the difference of those two. I mean, there are differences, but, you know, one being the, you know, the gateway with those types of uses surrounding it versus the other one. I don't have feelings, you know, strongly one way or the other, but I can see that there may be differences. Arlo, I don't know your thoughts on that.
Just, just a thought or two, you know, one district, two district, you know, it could be either. Some variation could be addressed with locational standards for certain uses, so just because they're in the same district doesn't mean all uses have to be exactly the same. We could do something like we were talking about with gas stations previously, that certain uses are only allowed in certain locations. Just something to think about.
To answer your question, Commissioner Gower, hotels are currently allowed in both districts.
Okay. Great. There you go. Okay, well, I think there's additional discussion. We've heard some concerns from commission about combining those. I think we continue to move forward and hear what staff wants to say as far as, you know, some of these concerns with respect to what's allowed out there moving forward. I don't think we have a consensus, but we've had some comments raised here tonight, so... Next item is the mixed-use urban districts. This is the larger one of combining a number of them, with the exception of some work at Midtown. Commissioners comments on what's been proposed to us for this. Don't all speak at once. I guess I have, I have one comment, maybe with respect to the discretionary review, and this, I think, applies with respect mainly to the height issue. I'm trying to reconcile the specific rationale behind the different heights that are put in there. I mean, we've got a limit of 55 feet elsewhere, which aligns with building code for an actual high-rise. 75 feet is the International Building Code reference of high-rise that's not local to Nevada. And then we have an 85-foot requirement here, which I'm not sure what the rationale is behind. So, I guess my question with this is, is... So I guess my question with this is, is there a, you know, I'm okay with the discretionary review for height, but how do we land on eighty-five feet?
There's nothing magic about that number. The general idea was it would be an easier process to do taller buildings in urban areas than suburban areas. I tend to agree that, I'm not sure we're seeing many buildings between seventy-five and eighty-five feet, so I, I don't think any of us have any major concerns if that was seventy-five to better align with the ordinances, but the idea is that a really big project would still have to go through some type of discretionary process, and smaller type projects could move through quicker to encourage them to happen.
And honestly, I'm, I'm fine with that as a requirement. I was just trying to understand where the, the distinction was, and if, if under, this eighty-five feet only appears in urban areas, I think we're going to be, she said, limited to what we're going to see there, and it is substantially high enough that that could be an issue. So I just was really posing the question, so. Commissioners, additional comments with respect to these different uses and holding some items out, looking at the overall standards? Are we generally in favor of what's being proposed here? I'm not hearing any questions, so it looks like we've got general consensus with respect to the urban districts for mixed use.
Could I, could I, Chair, bring up, kind of just kind of a procedural protocol or how we handle these situations, moving back to the airport districts? You know, we're, we're hoping to get some guidance on what to put in the initial draft of code, and our proposal in the staff report was basically unless directed, otherwise, we would do what's outlined in these issue sheets in terms of the initial draft code. So in terms of the airport, I think it's a continuing discussion. We intend to document topics that don't have kind of full unanimous agreement for possible later discussion, but in terms of what we put in the first draft of code, perhaps you could give us a little more direction on what we should do there and what your expectations would be in these types of situations.
So I guess the way that I would have to put something forward to that would be just to get a roll call vote in terms of whether there's approval of what's being recommended or not, and then if there is not, then you can take it with respect to what the rationale is behind that. So I guess the question that I would put to the council, or excuse me, to the commission, is are we in favor of what's been presented for the airport districts as a recommendation moving forward or not? So I will ask that question. I'm not sure if I need a motion on that, or if I can just pose the. Okay. I can pose the question and do roll calls. Is legal, okay with that? Okay. So with that, I will start with Commissioner Olivas. The question is whether or not, yea, you're in favor of what's been presented, or nay, you were opposed to that. So I'll start with Commissioner Olivas.
Commissioner Olivas, I'd be in favor of what's proposed.
Thank you. Mr. Griffith?
Commissioner Griffith, I am in favor.
Mr. Johnson, I am in favor. Commissioner Gower?
Commissioner Gower, I'm okay with it. Yep.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Still having trouble with it, so no.
Thank you. Commissioner Wieske?
Yea.
Thank you, so.
Just if I could, for, you know, procedurally, we don't want to just say, hey, it's done, you know, we're, we're back to one. We will keep this as a topic for further discussion. We'll take Commissioner Hawkins' input under advisement and, you know, pay attention to what, how we could deal with those types of issues, and if we see, you know, consequential changes, or perhaps locational criteria or something to address those concerns. So as we just go through these issues, I don't want people feeling if the vote didn't go their way, that it's, you know, it's done, decided, it's over, but it would be the way we would craft the initial drafts of code and bring these back, potentially for further discussion.
And I believe the way that the, the commission here would see it is that any comments that we have are being presented under each of these items when it goes to council, as, as I understand it, that's the direction. So at this point, when this is presented to council, the issue of the airports would be stated that there was concern at the planning commission for these reasons, and I would expect that to basically be the situation for all of them. Okay. So based on that, for consistency, I will go back to downtown districts. I will maintain the same order, so sorry, Commissioner Wieske, you'll be at the end each time.
Yea.
We're not. Commissioner Hawkins? Downtown districts.
Yea.
Commissioner Gower?
Commissioner Gower, with the request for more specifics regarding campus-oriented uses, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson, also yes.
Commissioner Griffith, yes.
Commissioner Olivas, yes.
And then we were finishing up the conversation on mixed-use urban districts, so if there's additional comments on that, if not, I'll ask for a vote again, starting with Commissioner Olivas.
I'd say yes to that, that's.
Commissioner Griffith?
Commissioner Griffith, yea.
Mr. Johnson, also yea. Mr. Gower?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Wieske?
Yea.
Thank you. Next item is mixed-use suburban districts as presented. I believe this is a combination of the, sort of the commercial districts, the split from the, all of it going in as a commercial district and combining it separate with the suburban districts and the commercial districts. Commissioners, any com, comments on what is being proposed with this one with respect to zoning uses, densities, combination of the different groups? All right, and I will start the roll call again on those in favor, starting with, and those opposed, starting with Commissioner Wieske?
Yea.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yea.
Mr. Gower?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson, yea. Commissioner Griffith?
Commissioner Griffith, I am in favor.
Commissioner Olivas?
Commissioner Olivas, yes, in favor.
Thank you very much. I did that for the suburban districts, then also now for the commercial districts. Any comments with respect to that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wieske?
Thank you, Commissioner Wieske.
I'm going to put this under commercial, but it could also have been discussed under urban and suburban, and that is certain drive-throughs. We need to consider them in, or they, they need to be looked at and considered in their appropriate use and district. And that is quite possibly, as, as an example, the ready teller, bank ready-tellers, where banks are moving away from brick-and-mortar stores, and we have twenty-four-hour ready-teller machines with the ability to drive through them, or walk to them, or ride a bicycle to them, or a bus, or whatever modale transportation you choose to access banking to get money or make a deposit. The other one, as an example, would be, and I believe Arlo mentioned this one tonight, also is prescription drugstores. You know, it, it may create a situation, especially in a twenty-four-hour, twenty-four-seven town, where it allows people to go twenty-four hours a day and pick up a prescription, but allowing the store to close down for security reasons, so that they don't have a fully-staffed store, but they have it, the prescription drug department is open and can fill prescriptions twenty-four-seven. So depending whether it's commercial district, or a mixed-use suburban, or urban district, I think that's a consideration for all three areas.
Thank you, Commissioner Wieske. I guess I would have a, pose a question maybe to Nathan, since he's sitting over there and not looking at me, just because I wanted to catch him off guard, sorry. In, in light of Commissioner Wieske's comments there, when we're looking at these areas, is there some specific restrictions that are put on those just because they're auto-centric, or is there basically a drive-through allowability or restriction that would, I guess I'm looking to see if this is something that needs to be put in that's not currently there, or if it just needs to be further refined as it's in there based on the different overall zones?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner, I, I suppose if I'm understanding your question, it would, it would need to be refined. The recommendations were, were distinct for auto-oriented uses between the urban mixed-use, the suburban mixed-use, and the general commercial, whereas current standards for AC and CC zones, those are our more suburban-oriented, commercial districts. Auto-oriented uses, for the most part, are, are allowed by right, given that. So what, what we're asking for direction is the appropriateness as we move forward, and, and certainly nothing set in stone, we'll be bringing this back to you, but the appropriateness and the intensity of auto-oriented uses in, within the three commercial, commercial areas.
Commissioner Wieske, might, does that satisfy some of the comments that you were making?
Does not affect what, what my thought process is. I, I don't want to see anything put in place that would exclude those operations from taking place as we have it now in certain corridors.
And that was, I guess, where I was trying to get with the question, is that if, that this is something that's going to need to be modified in order to allow it in areas that aren't currently allowed?
Correct. And whether it's done at, with this first look at zoning, or if it's done down the road further, I, I just want to get my comments out and my concerns out and set up for future discussion when staff feels it's most appropriate that we discuss it.
Thank you, Commissioner Wieske.
If I, if I could just, an, an idea maybe moving forward, I think we introduced this in the issue sheets, the idea of perhaps allowing those types of drive-throughs more broadly than restaurant drive-throughs. As I understand, there's two different use categories now for drive-through food service versus drive-through non-food service, but as a overgeneralization, they're regulated comparably. And what I'm hearing from Commissioner Wieske, which we've had some of the same discussions at the staff level, is that I'm hearing an appetite to more broadly allow bank drive-throughs, pharmacy drive-throughs in comparison to things like gas stations and food drive-throughs, and we could structure a first draft of code in line with that. So perhaps some of these more urban areas, a McDonald's drive-through would not be allowed, but a Walgreens with a window in the back would be allowed, and we would recommend keeping kind of an auto-oriented design standard so that that auto component isn't prominent right along Virginia Street, but is more a, a smaller component of the project, some variation of that. So if, if I'm hearing that correctly, that's certainly something that staff is, is comfortable with, and we could build an initial draft of code along those general lines, and then you could look at it and refine it from there.
Thank you. The next item was the commercial districts. I think we did the suburban districts, now our commercial districts. Any comments? Additional comments on that? Okay, looking for a yea or a nay vote on what's being presented to us, starting with Commissioner Wieske?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yea, with comments as described.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Commissioner Hawkins, yea.
Mr. Gower?
Yes, and I, I think the idea of the mixed employment district is a good one. There's a lot of merit there.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, yea, on what's been presented.
Commissioner Griffith, I concur.
Commissioner Olivas?
Commissioner Olivas, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Could I, just to being annoying and clarify, since this is our first time through this process, are there any objections to what Commissioner Wieske outlined? If not, we would take that as generally part of the yea votes you just took.
We're not actually allowed to disagree with Commissioner Wieske, so. Sorry, I just had to get in there for the architect comment earlier. Next up is the office districts. We have presented to maintain professional office and do away with the general office and roll those into some other zoning districts. Are there any comments with what's being proposed for the office districts? Okay, I'll take another vote on what's been presented. Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Commissioner Griffith, yes.
Mr. Johnson, yes. Mr. Gower?
Yes.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wieske?
Yea.
Thank you. Next is the industrial districts. We have a couple of them on here, including in this one, the modification from IB to the mixed employment district, but maintaining the industrial and industrial, commercial. Any comments on this item? What's being presented? Mr. Griffith?
Commissioner Griffith, just so we have it on the record, I wanted to echo that the mixed employment district, I thought, was a really good idea. I would like clarification on the direction provided from a council member for warehousing districts separate from industrial? He just notes it, so I don't know if we yea or nay on that or not.
That has been brought up by a member of council. I think the intent was to split the industrial districts and apply a less intensive land use category to some of those areas. Staff is not recommending that approach. We think there may be merit in some adjacency standards and rezonings and things like that in certain areas, but that industrial, we need, we need an area for heavy industry, and that's what industrial is.
I just want to make sure when we yea, we noted that we were yaying that or not, knowing that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wieske?
For the record, Commissioner Wieske, I would not be in favor of separating the two because of, you never know what the next tenant or user is going to be and how, what their, their business plan is, what their method of operation is. I think having them both under the same makes a lot of sense, and it also conforms to what majority of other communities have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wieske. Any additional comments? Okay, so again, we're looking at what is presented to us on this, so looking for again a yea or a nay vote, starting with Commissioner Wieske?
Yea.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Want to hold off on this one. I, I'd like to talk to Arlo in depth about this later on.
So is that a nay?
That's a nay.
Thank you. Commissioner Gower?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson, yea. Mr. Griffith?
Commissioner Griffith, yes, and I concur with staff.
Commissioner Olivas, yes.
Thank you. And then the final one, as presented, was the maintaining of the hotel casinos district, which I believe is only in one location at this point, based on what was presented to us. Any comments from the commission on this? Those in favor, again, yea or nay vote in terms of what was presented? Commissioner Olivas?
Commissioner Olivas, yes.
Commissioner Griffith, yes.
Mr. Johnson, yes. Mr. Gower?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wieske?
Yea.
Yea, okay. So I believe we've provided some comments and some direction on all of those. I'd like to compliment staff on the presentation for this. I think we all had an opportunity to look through it and appreciate you giving the information. Any additional questions or comments from commission? Commissioner Gower, did you have something else?
Commissioner Griffith's ready to go.
Commissioner Griffith, I just want to say a quick thank you, because you guys came this evening, and then we also got to sit with you in your office, which was helpful for me, because I got to meet with you, then review, and then come to the meeting. So thanks for staff's extra time.
I would echo that and look forward. I think that's a positive approach for us moving forward with how we're going to handle these, so we get a little more information and questions answered beforehand, so.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Wieske? I would just like to say that the way that you chose to go through this list tonight and going through by items, there wasn't too many items to discuss tonight, so it wasn't overwhelming, gave us an opportunity to look at each one of them and comment, or move on to the ones that we do have comments, and I, I think that's a very efficient way of going through this process.
Thank you. I think staff did a good job. We'll, hopefully, the, the rest of them break out as straightforward as this. I'm maybe being a little over-optimistic on that. Mr. Gower?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I guess, a question on procedures and, like, an other category, or a parking lot, however you want to call it, for capturing some of the items, Arlo, like you mentioned that you've heard from the public, the item that I brought up and the, the item. the item that I brought up in the, um, the item earlier today about the health districts comments and how we're capturing those. I know this Title eighteen update has been sort of a catch-all for those type of topics. So, um, I guess I'm just concerned about all of those sort of little items that are thrown into the bucket getting lost. So I, um, would appreciate some feedback on how those are being tracked and how they will be tracked and discussed going forward.
Great question. Claudia and her team has a fairly extensive list of these, maybe call them cleanup items that aren't directly related to implementing a master plan policy, but are things that have been suggested or problems that have emerged over the years. So we do want to bring those forward for discussion. We will document those. We'll add the topics that come up at, at these meetings to that pretty broad list. And I think at some point, we're going to need to go through that list and have some sort of prioritization and discussion of, of what to do on them. I would recommend that we go through kind of these big framework topics first. And I was, the reason I stood up is I was going to kind of ask what you all thought of the process and I heard the comments, you may have answered it. But we can make this a kind of flexible approach. And maybe it needs to be more than six meetings and a seventh meeting, we start going into more details. Ideally, if everything works really smoothly, we have the contingency meeting at the end. We can deal with unresolved stuff. So anyway, we're tracking those topics and we'll be bringing those forward for you. And additionally, we'll be keeping a separate list of kind of these non-unanimous, um, subjects for possible further discussion, like the airport area and the industrial areas where we didn't have unanimous agreement and keep those kind of separately documented. So, and just a little more, um, when we get to development standards, and that's what a lot of these topics involve, those are big meetings. It's a long list of development standards that have been suggested. And there may be some merit in going through a prioritization process at that time. Possibly we can just fast-track some easy things, some things we should do with the update. There may be some really hot-button issues, signs have been brought up. Perhaps Airbnbs that just belong in a separate process. Adult businesses is going through that process right now. We don't want to bundle a whole bunch of kind of unrelated, really controversial things into this update because we'd be concerned that it could get bogged down and not get approved. So we'll keep track of all that. We'll keep bringing it back to you with increasing detail. But for, for us at least, this was very helpful. So now we know which zoning districts we're going to put in code. We can start to populate those with all the details and bring that back for the next round.
Commissioner Griffith, for the record, just because it was brought up in public comment, do we have an estimated time for the signage process?
It was pretty well articulated in the code assessment report that that should be one of those separate processes that we would look at doing following adoption of the Title eighteen update. But we anticipate bringing that back when we have these development standards meetings and have that part of the prioritization. So if the commission wanted to fast-track that, we could get that direction.
Perfect, thank you.
If I can jump in on that really quick. Claudia Hansen, planning manager. As you know, sign regulations are kind of scattered throughout the code. So as we go through the design standards and actually the overlays, there's a lot of sign standards in there. So we're going to have to have a parking lot or some other approach on those. Because as soon as we get into the details of each of the, each of the MU overlays and all of the neighborhood plans, all of those have sign standards in them. So it's, the ordinance will be down the road, but we're going to have to talk about it sooner than later.
Thank you. Commissioners, any additional comments on this item? Okay, thank you very much, Arlo and Nathan and Callie and Claudia and Michelle. And we will move on to the next item on our agenda. I'm not frigging anybody tonight. I'm already in enough trouble. Item number nine, Tricky Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report.
Okay, we met, um, we met last Wednesday. First thing on topic was, uh, Warm Springs and its financial position. It's been taken care of with our vote. All monies have gone back to who they need to receive them. Also on the agenda was more of the regional plan. And that's another meeting on the twenty-fourth, which will speak on the regional plan as well. That's all I got for you.
Thank you. Next is item number ten, staff announcements.
Claudia Hansen, planning manager, I obviously don't have anything on Title eighteen. And three items went to council last time. Dickerson Zone Change, Reno Psychory, and the Makita Appeal, all were approved by council.
Thank you. Next is item number eleven, commissioners' suggestions for future agenda items. Commissioner Wieske?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to have a discussion, um, on one of our upcoming agendas regarding the billboard, um, that was approved at the apartments down behind the summit, Sierra Mall. I know that we were very, very meticulously went through, um, a LED sign that was proposed at Summit, um, and it was denied. And I, so I'm not sure how this sign came up. I would like to be able to discuss the proximity of the sign to residential units. And I would also like to be able to discuss, um, conditioning future projects against billboards, um, and know if that's a legal option that we have in proposing conditions. And can we do that in the next sixty days as it's personally important to me?
I think the, you know, urgency of that request has been duly noted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wieske. Any additional requests? Okay, item number twelve, public comment. For a public comment on any action item or general public comment. And we should make a comment under public comment. Being none, I will bring it back for item number thirteen, motion for adjournment.
Second.
Commissioner, for a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.